A majority of the board is present, therefore a quorum is present and the meeting is qualified to consider the agenda items. Tonight's flag salute will be led by the Booker T Washington High School JROTC under the direction of Lieutenant Ruston Schwiktenberg. And if I can ask that the JROTC stay just a few minutes after their presentation of the flag. We will introduce them just a little bit after the presentation.
Would you please stand and remain standing for the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance by the Booker T Washington JROTC color guard? Color guard, post. Would you please join in the pledge? Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
I want to remind those wishing to address the board to sign up with the clerk at the end of the board table on my right, again, Ms. Cindy Hutchings. Also, if you are a applicant for the board to seat and you have not checked in with Ms. Hutchings, please do so now. As a reminder, there is a five-minute limit to the comments. Upon approval of the consent agenda, no additional speakers will be accepted. Before I consider a motion to adopt the agenda, Dr. Guest, are there any changes?
Not tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 Aye. With that, we can move into our regular agenda. Thank you all for being here. We do have an interpreter this evening and headsets available. I think someone's going to come and translate that for me.
Buenas noches. Tenemos un intérprete hoy día presente. Los que quieran o los que necesiten el servicio de intérprete, tenemos unos dispositivos en la parte de atrás, por favor. Acérquense.
Thank you, and I know we do have several special presentations this evening, Dr. Guest.
Yes, well, our first very special presentation tonight is a resolution of appreciation for our outgoing board member, Amy Shelton from District Two, and I'll hand it over to you, Madam President, to lead us in that effort.
I'm going to read the resolution from the podium if Ms. Shelton will meet me there. In classic Amy form, she really wanted to represent her school, so she wanted to introduce the JROTC this evening, so I'm going to let her do that.
Thank you. I also want to share that I have a piece of Booker T to take with me. Dr. Rorich brought me a piece from the old fieldhouse, the old flooring, so I have this to hold on to as a treasure from Booker T. But it's my pleasure to introduce the color guard from this evening. The pledge leader was Mr. James Young, and the color guard is Raul Hernandez, David Marshall, Tywin Swaim, and Julio Diaz Alizalde. Thank you for your service. Have a great school year.
So we have prepared a resolution. Whereas Amy Shelton has served the children of Independent School District Number One with dedication and honor as a member of its Board of Education from February 2017 through August 2018, and whereas Ms. Amy Shelton has served the patrons of Independent School District Number One with time and talent as a member of its Board of Education representing Board Election District Number Two. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of Independent School District Number One, Tulsa County, Oklahoma, that the contributions of Amy Shelton as a member of the Board of Education be recognized and commended as being in the highest tradition of public service and dedication to the ideals of public education. Adopted by the Board of Education. I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 Aye. I think anyone that knows Amy knows that we don't need a resolution to...
I'm so incredibly proud of District Two for being here to say how much you care about your kids' education and how much it means to you that there's someone on the board who can represent you well. I hope that I have given a small part in just giving some more voice to District Two. It was my great honor to do so, and I'm excited to pass on the baton this evening. From here, we're going to move on to the candidates and their remarks. I do want to quickly say, because I don't have any other way to do this, but for everybody that's out watching on Facebook in particular, my husband, happy anniversary, it's our 19th anniversary. I didn't invite him to come to the board meeting, but I don't think he loves me that much. So now we'll move on to our candidates. And I want to thank all of you for your interest and willingness to serve on the board. Okay, so tonight we're going to hear, sorry, we're having a lot to talk about. Tonight we'll be hearing from six candidates for the board seat, although as I understand it, only four have checked in. So if there's anybody else that is here and wants to speak and was an applicant, please check in with Ms. Hutchings. We did, before the meeting, have them draw out of a bowl for the order of speakers, so that's how we came up with the order. And please come forward when your number is called. So we'll start with number one.
Buenas noches y gracias. Thank you, Dr. Guest, President Tashriver, and members of the board for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Hania Wester. Me llamo Hania Wester, and I come to you with a diverse background with this district. I've served for 18 years as a teacher and directora or principal in both a very high need school, as well as in one of the top performing magnets in the district. Through an amazing group of colleagues, estudiantes, padres, and community partners, we achieved a great deal. I have had my own children invested in the district's most challenging schools, its high demand schools, its magnets and charter schools, with children currently in both Booker T Washington and Carver. I currently manage the local team of the country's largest dropout prevention program, communities and schools, serving at seven TPS schools and almost 4,000 students and around 550 of those with the highest needs. While on that subject, it should be clear that CIS does not receive any financial support from the school district. Further, after consulting legal counsel prior to even considering to apply, I was informed that I am in alignment with state law and do not present a conflict of interest. With that being said, though I feel that I have had a great history of knowledge and passion for the school district and to offer its board, that is not the primary reason that I have applied. I'm applying for those you see here. Tonight we have around 120 folks that came to support my application. Estoy solicitando este puesto por los que están presentes, mi familia, los miembros del vecindario de la comunidad latina en Tulsa, y esta noche tenemos más o menos como 121 de ustedes. Si están aquí para apoyar mi solicitud, por favor levanten su mano. If you're here in support of my application, please wave your hand. Hace 20 años, 20 years ago, my husband and I felt strongly we needed to invest our lives among the vulnerable, placing our lives and those of our children in such a way to advance the cause of justice. It was in living out those values and as we built relationships with those in our community that we began to be changed as a family. Relationships like our oldest daughter, whom we adopted as a result of realizing that she was considering dropping out, and her mom, a non-English speaker, did not know the opportunities available to her daughter or how to navigate through the obstacles she faced, or a former student that we fostered, who through all the support and an incredible new mom, he became the first in his family to graduate from high school, and whom my youngest children still refer to as their hermano or brother. If that weren't enough, I applied because of the beauty that my family and I have discovered through 20 years of living life in and among our most vulnerable, in a neighborhood of immigrants accustomed to living in the shadows with little opportunity for their voices to be heard. I was reminded of this even last week as I spoke to a group of mothers and capitanas, many of whom are here tonight, and seeing hope kindled in their eyes and the joy at the prospect of an opportunity to have access to an actual voice. My credentials demonstrate my ability and passion for the district and its diverse schools, but in a majority Latinx district and majority English language learner district, pensamos que es hora. It's time. According to my research, TPS has never had a Latinx board member, let alone one that is closely familiar with this unrepresented community, so we believe que es hora. It's time. If this board believes that it is also time for an equitable representation of voices to be at the table, if you believe I align with the district's values, beliefs, and are truly ready to navigate this equitable education journey, then it is my commitment to you, ya esta comunidad, that you will have a voice. Tendrán una voz, and new ways of engagement will be discovered and implemented so that our district will be a destination of excellence for generations to come. Y es mi esperanza. It's my hope that I can create the opportunity for this hardworking and dedicated board and administration to experience what my family and I have experienced, that there is great beauty in our community and the underrepresented have a lot to teach us. Thank you for this opportunity. El público presente, un millón de gracias por venir a apoyarme. Me conmueve el que hayan venido y el que estén dispuestos a levantar su voz esta noche. Thank you very much. Buenas noches.
Number two. Number three.
Good evening. Superintendent Dr. Guest, Madam President Schreiber, esteemed members of this board. My name is Evelyn Conquo. I am applying for the District Two board seat. I first want to thank everyone who's come to support me, friends, or loved ones. If you show me kindness, if you show me encouragement, if you show me love, know that my heart's full. I even received a song from one of my former students. You made it when you received a shout-out in a song in collaboration with his father. If you're a fan of hip-hop, if you're a fan of music, remind me to send it to you, it's amazing. I'm also thrilled that there were nine people who applied, that there are seven people vying for this seat, because that means that we care about education. It means that we are talking about education in this room. It means, and that's an excellent thing, it's exciting that we're talking about how to improve the quality of instruction. It's exciting that we're talking about students. It's exciting that we're talking about the future of this district. As a former teacher, one of my favorite things to do is to go to the homes of my students, sit with their parents, and I would ask them, what do you want for this child? What does this child need? Where do they want to go with your hopes and dreams? How can you get them wings to get there? I truly believe, I truly believe in equity. I have this quote that lives by in my heart. It goes, what you do without me, what you do for me, you do to me. I don't want to do things to families, I want to do things with families and for families. I am a champion of perspective. You will hear me come up here and say, perspective, perspective, and perspective. I truly believe when we seek to understand, when we seek to empathize with others, we're able to forge a better path towards progress. I know this to be true. I wanted to do this. I want to be District Two's representative. I began my journey in education nearly seven years ago. Thirty kindergarten students offered the trajectory of my life. These students, I loved. I remember the drive that I made where I lived, 71st and South Harvard, to 48th and North Lewis. Each day on my drive I took Riverside, it was still open back then. On my drive to Riverside, I saw people jogging. It was early, they were walking their dogs. I saw roads that were smooth, sidewalks that were paved. As soon as I hit First Street to 44, I noticed something. I noticed that the roads were no longer as smooth, they were bumpy. I noticed that the sidewalks weren't paved. I noticed that the fences were worn down and there were more boarded up homes. I quickly realized and it became apparent to me that there's a tale of two Tulsans. That tale exists in education. We have inequities in this district. We have inequities in the pathway that kids have to excellence. We must address this. We must fight for kids. I have the privilege of learning the joy and knowing the joy inside and outside of the classroom. I've taught three other grade levels over a period of five years. I've coached teachers at my school. I've coached students in soccer. I've coached students in debate. I've even coached the dance team. I've led teacher development for TPS teachers through an educational nonprofit. I coached 18 teachers full-time. And now I spend my time collaborating with families trying to find a pathway to an excellent high school. I want our students to get to high school and onto college. Wouldn't you know it, many of our students now want to become Cubers and Live Cubers. I want to help them meet their goals. I want to help them reach wherever they want to go. When I first started teaching, I wasn't very good. I had to master my craft. I had to work on it because I was committed to my growth. I knew what my growth meant for students. One person that helped mentor me has watched me over the years. Her daughter will attend Kendall Whittier down the street from where I live, and it's not only personal to me because her child will go there, every child that's come in my classroom will go to TPS schools, every child that's gone to my classroom will must, must receive an excellent quality education. I've taught at schools such as William Penn and Tulsa Legacy where I've seen kids struggle, where I've seen what can happen when kids aren't focused upon, where I've seen what happens when we forget and marginalize people. We can do better. Is my personal imperative, is my personal imperative to run for this seat? Should I not be appointed?
I'm going to fight. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Number four.
Thank you. I'm Bob Howard. I can tell you a little bit about why I'm interested in the position and my background. I have no cheering section here. My wife is back there somewhere. She may have left at this point. I'm a Tulsa Public School person. I graduated from TPS, as did my wife, our two sons, my father, her family, so it goes back generations, and this is an opportunity to serve once again. I graduated from Central, went on and got a PhD in chemical physics at Indiana, came back and taught at TU for 33 years. I served as chairman of the chemistry department, as associate graduate dean, and president of the faculty senate. Teachers were always a focal point for me. I've worked with teachers, in particular TPS teachers, since 1988. Professional development, I teach a course for pre-service teachers in STEM, and I served as the graduate advisor for the Math and Science Education Program. Teachers are really the focal point of what it's all about. If you think about it, how do the things get done in schools? They get done by teachers, and I think that's the important focus that the board has to keep. My wife and I just moved, didn't just move, five years ago moved into the Kendall Whittier neighborhood. We were the first house across the street from Kendall Whittier. It was a time when it was rather dicey to move there, but it's been a wonderful neighborhood, full of different people, diversity, and fun. If you've never walked through the Kendall Whittier Park in the evening, you really should. It's such a cool place. There are families out selling refreshments, kids playing soccer and basketball. It's just a wonderful neighborhood, and it would be my great privilege to serve these people. I'm very interested in several initiatives that the board has. I know nobody's really talked about the strategic plan, but to me, that's very important. The Tulsa Teacher Corps is something I'm very interested in. That's the sort of thing that could really make a mark in Tulsa. That's a very difficult thing. When you think about it, you're taking a diverse group of people, trying to train them for diverse classrooms, and get them out in a relatively short period of time. I'd like to work with the board and make sure that this works well. I know that you're working on it very hard, and I think it has the potential to be a nationally significant program. I'm also interested in the high school realignment. It's amazing how high school has not changed since I went to high school in 1847. They still teach the same courses. It's just changed they put AP in front of it now. When my younger son went to Booker T, his favorite course was actually auto mechanics, which has been done away with since then. But we're missing some of the hands-on things we used to have in high school. There are some new things that you can do. FabLab, things like FabLab, or the sorts of things that can be incorporated in high school and make it a much more meaningful experience. So I think that's one of the things I'm really interested in. Finally, it's very mundane, seeing Chris Hutchings over there. I've served for the last 10 years of the Bond Formulation and Bond Oversight Committee. It's a wonderful group of people, and you don't think about the board being doing things other than working with teacher or educational issues. But an important part of their job is overseeing a vast real estate holding, and I'd be very interested in continuing to make sure this is well-kept and well-groomed. I really appreciate your consideration. It's going to be a hard decision, I can tell from the two people who've already spoken, but I'm delighted to be able to come up and talk with you. Thank you.
Number two. Which I can't count, but I understand someone has got number two now.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Ronald Barr. I moved here in 1974 from New York, although I was brought up in Ohio. My daughters, sons, my three kids all went to Memorial here in town. I've spoken about this vacancy that came up with three of my good friends that I've developed over the years here, who I thought might have valuable input. Not political, but one of them was Dewey Marlin, who has ideas of this, who conveyed them to me. The other is Clayton Bond, who's been here. I know Clayton's two kids, one of them went to Harvard, one of them went to Yale, and one went to Stanford after Booker T. I think we've done a great job here, and my daughter went to Memorial, then to TU, and then went to DC where she worked in the Senate, now she's a consultant. I couldn't be more proud. I think our most valuable resource that we have in this country is our children, is our kids. And when it was announced in the paper that there was a vacancy, I thought to myself, well, I didn't really want to go through the campaigning and the idea of putting signs out or getting a ruling section, which I applaud, I applaud what you both have done. My cheering section was of three. It was Dewey and Jim Goodman, who some of you may know, who's been a member of yours, and also Clayton Bond. So I have a lot of ideas from a business point of view of analyzing and trying to look at a kind of a macro overview of Tulsa Public Schools, how we might compare with James Rockenarrow and some of the other schools in the area, with the performance of our students, and be able to get some kind of measurement going or some form of analysis. The teachers finally are getting paid a decent sum, and one of my thoughts is that we ought to really work on preserving that and getting some of these oil companies to hold them to the fire a little bit. And I would intend to get some of these oil companies using this as a forum to pull me up. Having said all of this, having used up only two minutes of my time, I went in to get the forum. I told the office folks last week that I lived at Yale and I gave them my address, or East Third Street, and it turns out that I'm not in District Two. So even though I've kind of gotten the bug and I'm enthused about working on this, if you would decide to pick me, I can't serve. And I thank you very much. Maybe we'll see you again, I hope so, at some of these meetings or what have you. So thank you very much.
Number six.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gary Copper, and I filled out an application for the opening of the school board. The reason I did was that the last few years I had kept my disappointment level with education issues. What experience has been my stepdaughter Lana... What experience has been my stepdaughter Lana, who is an OSU Masters in Health Administration, intern here in the district, working with Steve Frevis. Budget cutting before she graduated ended her hopes of working for the district. She has since accepted a position with CAP of Tulsa. Dr. Gist, you met her when you first started as superintendent. This bitter experience will provide me unlimited energy and determination to work tirelessly every day for this district. A district I have lived in since 1981, with seven-year stint in Owasso, which was unbearable, and I gladly moved back in 1995 to where I live now. The choice of me would be a bold paradigm shift, a dynamic, out-of-the-box choice. It would add a dimension that the Board does not have. It would fill a gap in business and industry that is not represented. I would be a guide in the global economy, in a world where the students must be successful. I would be a broad-based member spanning across multiple disciplines. For example, when I was in school, I had a free lunch card in my pocket. And today, I own two businesses and am part-owner of our family farms. I am fully qualified to be a member of Booker T. Football Marching Band or the Edison Eagles varsity wrestling team. And by way, as owner of Euromark European Foods, I could manage the school cafeteria. My path has been the classic, traditional way in industry of trade school, VOTAC, community college, and apprenticeship. My work, my entire career, has been in the field today that you call STEM, working in the oil and aerospace industries. Designing, inventing, engineering, and manufacturing things with my own hands. Things that our society is built on. I am not a teacher, but I have taught in district classrooms, giving presentations in foreign language classes, and hosting field trips at my business, Euromark. And I managed a Global Alliance Kids World Educational Booth. I taught Sunday School for four years at St. Peter and Paul Catholic Church, seventh and eighth graders. That was for two hours each Sunday, and I would come home exhausted. You may not know me, but I have been involved in working for Tulsa Schools behind the scenes for many years. Dr. Gist, if I seem familiar, you and I met, talked about foreign languages on the sidewalk at Quick Trip. I would do my job on the Board, the same as when I was an operations analyst for United Way. When programs were poured into Eugene Field, Street School, the Choices and Fast Programs, and the Reading Programs. My style is a bottom-up grassroots, boots-on-the-ground, head-in-the-stars style. I come to people at their level as a peer, relating to them, where they're at in their life. I feel that I have a background to do so, and I think of my nephews, one of which is partly Hispanic, one who is partly Black. I would work for all people in this district if I was so appointed. Thank you.
So again, thank you all for speaking this evening. We are going to, excuse me, sorry. Number seven?
Yes, thank you.
Great, number seven.
My name's Jenny Plaster, and it's a real pleasure to be here with you this evening. Thank you so much for having me. I applied for the position because I'm in real estate, and I get to experience every day, every time I talk to a buyer, how much other school districts enjoy the privilege of being preferred over Tulsa Public Schools. I in fact had the opportunity of working with several out-of-state buyers earlier this year. Buyers who were so excited about the opportunity of moving to Oklahoma. Buyers told me how excited they were about Oklahoma's cost of living and Oklahoma's transportation, and how great it was going to be to move from Houston, where two hours is the average commute time every day. And of course, in Oklahoma, how often do you have a two-hour commute every day? Not very often. They were so excited at the option of having 10 minutes to get to the grocery store, 10 minutes to get to a Little League game. It was so exciting to them. The Houston family, they love our weather. Can you even imagine? They were so thrilled. They were very, very excited. They were looking for Montessori School, and I was really excited to give them any information I could on that. And then about March, their emails to me stopped, and about April, they wouldn't return my phone calls. I had a family from San Diego. They did buy a house here as a rental property. They're not moving. These families are not interested in bringing their children to Oklahoma. They're not interested in moving here because the school districts, they feel from the research that they've done, in San Diego and Houston are far preferable to the school districts in Oklahoma. And this is not just a Tulsa problem, this is an Oklahoma problem. But it doesn't have to be, because Tulsa Schools are leading the way in innovative programs. We have the first Montessori School that's a public school. We have programs like the immersion program that my son went to in elementary school that is amazing, and it is being replicated or attempted to be replicated by schools like Jinx. But I would tell you right now that every time I have a buyer who comes to me, and they say, I say to them, "What are you looking for in a house?" And they say, "Three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a fireplace is a must." What do they say? "It has to be outside of Tulsa Public Schools." And they don't care that Kendall Whittier has great after-school programs. And they don't care that Rogers High School is a college program now. They don't care that there's fantastic and innovative and award-winning programs all over Tulsa Public Schools, because all they care about is what they've heard and very negative PR. And I hate this. I hate that our public schools, which are fantastic and innovative and creative and out-of-the-box, are drawing people away. And I don't want it to continue this way. And I don't want to see it happening out of state and out of our district, because it's decimating our communities. And I have friends, close friends, who are in Kendall Whittier and have been for the last four years, and they love the school, and they've come to me recently, and they want to move away because they're Rogers alumni. They went to Rogers High School years ago, and that's the mental picture that they have, is Rogers years ago. And I told them, "Do you understand that your girls, who have been at Kendall Whittier for the last four years, have advantages? If they'll just stay with the school, they have advantages to Rogers. Rogers is a high school college program now. When your girls graduate from Rogers, they will have, they will have a college associate's degree. What an amazing opportunity this is for your children. Think about it, just consider it, just consider it." Do you know what those people told me? They told me they didn't know. They have been, their daughter has been for four years at Kendall Whittier, and they didn't know. They didn't know. We're doing our communities a disservice. Wonderful families that could invest in the community, be homeowners, build the community, and they love the school. They love the school already. I want to be a part of building up these communities, of expanding these programs, of making them advocates for their own children and for their own communities. I think it needs to be done. I think it must be done. It has to happen. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak this night.
Are there any more applicants present? I want to apologize to Ms. Plaster. I got turned around with the number eight system and circled back to number two, and four out of the nine people are here, so I apologize. I do want to thank you, everyone, again, for speaking. It's a crowded room, it's overflowed here on Facebook, so your applications and just being willing to invest in Tulsa Public Schools is very meaningful and exciting to all of us. We are going to go upstairs and do our executive session now, and we'll be convened an open session for discussion after we finish that. So do I have a motion to adjourn, to go into executive session to discuss the individuals who have applied for appointment to the Board of Education to fill the Board election District Two vacancy as authorized by the Oklahoma statutes? Sumner, second. I'll call for the vote. Mr. Percival?
Aye.
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 Excuse me, in Title 70, Section 5, 118 of the Oklahoma statutes. All of the members of the Board present at this meeting were present at the executive session. Nothing else was discussed or occurred in executive session. This will constitute the minutes of the executive session. Mr. Percival?
Mayor. President. I move that we task for leadership, yourself and our Vice President, Dr. Decker, to schedule, as soon as possible, follow-up interviews with following applicants. Ponia Wester, Alvin Akonkwo, Robert Howard, Gary Copper, and Jenny Plaster.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Fay, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 So those five candidates should look for some communication from us when we can get scheduled interviews, and we'll do that next week in executive session as well. If you have questions, you can reach out to Ms. Hutchins, who will have more specifics tomorrow, and I think all of you have her contact information. So from there, we need to approve the minutes of the July 16th and the August 20th regular meetings of the Board, and I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Any questions regarding either of those? Mr. Percival?
I'll need to abstain on the August 20th minute, as I was not.
Okay. I think we'll still vote as a group, but we understand that you're not consenting to the 20th, because you weren't here. Call for the vote, Ms. Fay.
Aye.
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 Moving to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
With approval.
Second. Any discussion or concern on the consent agenda? Dr. Decker?
I'm going to abstain on item E4 as it relates to CAP Tulsa, and I'm an employee of CAP Tulsa.
I'll call for the vote on the consent agenda.
Aye.
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 From there, we'll move to the action agenda. Item F1 recommends paying the College Board for advanced placement exams administered to students at Washington High School during the 2018-2019 school year. The cost is not to exceed $60,000, and the fund for this is the Washington High School Activity Fund. Any questions on item F1? Seeing none? To approve item F1. Sumner. I'll call for the vote, Mr. Percival.
Aye.
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 Item F2 is a recommendation to enter into an agreement with the Wallace Foundation to receive a grant for participation in the second year of Wallace's partnerships for social and emotional learning initiative. There is no cost to the district. I'll entertain a motion to approve item F2. Sumner.
Second.
Any questions on item F2? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Fay.
Aye.
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 Item F3 is a post-victim approval to enter into an agreement with Southwestern Oklahoma State University, setting forth the terms under which they will place student interns, or student social workers with current district personnel within the district for purposes of fulfilling certification preparation requirements for the 2018-2019 school year. There is no cost to the district. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve item F3.
Second.
Any questions regarding item F3? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Mr. Percival.
Aye.
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 Moving to item F4. It's a recommendation to enter into agreement with Midwest Bus Sales of El Reno, Oklahoma, to lease short-term vehicles for the Transportation Department. And the rationale we'll read on this one is due to a delay in delivery of buses for the Transportation Department. Midwest Bus Sales has agreed to furnish short-term lease vehicles, if needed, at no cost to the district. I'll entertain a motion to approve item F4.
Move through.
Second.
I have a question regarding this item. So is Midwest Bus Sales a bus manufacturing or just a sales entity?
It's a manufacturer, Madam President. And the agreement is part of the bond package. We purchased 22 buses from them, and 11 of them are delayed in their delivery. So in order for them to fulfill the obligation, we're entering in this agreement to make sure we get the buses that we need while we're waiting for the ones that were purchased.
So we will be purchasing the buses that were made in Oklahoma from Midwest Bus Sales? Or just leasing some short-term? Is that correct?
We are leasing from them the buses to cover for the delay in the manufacturer that we purchased from. And the company we purchased from is...
Madam President, I wanted to add one thing, that those buses are not being made in Oklahoma. They're CNG buses, and the bus plant didn't produce this kind of bus in Oklahoma.
That's a larger question, and I recently had a letter from the constituent on it. There are in fact buses made in Oklahoma, is that not correct, manufactured here? School buses?
There are, but these particular CNG buses were, are not.
Does the district purchase any buses via other contracts from the company that makes the buses in Oklahoma?
We just recently did an RFP, and I believe they submitted a price, but they were not the lowest responded bidder for 90 so buses.
Thank you. Is there, do we have a motion on the table? Any other questions regarding item F4? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Mr. Percival.
Aye.
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 That moves us to the information agenda, and I will turn that over to Dr. Gist for this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, and everyone who is here with us tonight. I just want to join in the echoes of gratitude for everyone who came to be a part of this really important meeting tonight, to be here for the work that this Board does in leading the district, and to be a part of the next steps for the Board as well, for those of you who are here for candidates. Information items are brought to the Board for consideration. So they are on the agenda, they are not acted upon during the meeting in which they are presented as information. If they are to be acted on, they'll come back to the Board as either an item on a consent agenda or on an action agenda in the future. So tonight, we have items G1 through G5, and those will be presented by our Chief Schools, Dr. Eric Green. And before I turn it over to Dr. Green, I want to acknowledge that this will be Dr. Green's last Board meeting with Tulsa Public Schools. Unfortunately for us, but fortunately for Jackson, Mississippi, he has been selected as their new Superintendent of Schools, and so he will be... To lead that district, we're very grateful for his service at Tulsa Public Schools, and congratulate you, Dr. Green, for that really exciting new opportunity, and thank you for your service to Tulsa Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Gist, and to the entire Board, and to my colleagues here in the Tulsa Public Schools community. Just thank you for all of the support that you've... Just thank you for all of the support that you've shown to us as a school system, the ways in which you've pushed us to be better every day for our students and for this community. I really do appreciate you and take lots of love and wonderful lessons with me onto Jackson. So with that, item G1 is to enter into a building usage agreement with Edison Preparatory School and the DoubleTree Hotel at Warren Place, Tulsa, Oklahoma, to provide a space for their Jingle Bell Ball, December 21st, 2018. The cost is not to exceed $6,150 and that will be taken from the Edison School Activity Fund, number 573. Item G2 is to enter into a special event permit with the City of Tulsa and Edison High School to block off a section of 39th to 41st Place or her streets from Delaware to Florence. That's for Edison's, Edison High School's homecoming parade on September 21st, 2018. Parade is held every year for, has been held every year for over 23 years and has outgrown the school's parking lot. There's no cost to the district. Item G3 is to enter into an agreement with Laura Dester Children's Center, which is operated now by Liberty Healthcare, to provide educational services to all appropriate and eligible students attending or residing at the said facility and that's during the second semester of this school year, 2018-2019. There's no cost to the district. Item G4 is to enter into an agreement, our contract with the Music Theater International, MTI, out of New York, New York, to provide honk for Memorial High School, April 26th to 27th, 2019. And the participation in this type of theatrical production is limited for students unless offered through the high school music programs. The cost is not to exceed $1,400 and it will be taken from Memorial High School's Activity Fund. And item G5 is to enter into an agreement with Smore for Schools of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and with Bell Elementary. It's to provide electronic framework for communication between Bell Elementary parents and teachers with data analytics for the 2018-2019 school year. The cost is $1,500 and it would be taken from the school's type one funds.
Any questions on those five items? Ms. Keller.
Thank you, Dr. Green. I was wondering if you could please offer any information about why Edison chose the DoubleTree for their Jingle Bell Ball?
I cannot, but I can certainly get that information and share.
That would be good, if they'll have any jingle bells at the Jingle Bell Ball.
So I can, I do not, but I am confident that...
I can confidently say that they will have jingle bells at the Jingle Bell Ball.
And is it a formal or semi-formal?
Is this anything? Is it a formal? I do not know if it is a formal, but I'm confident that they will be in the appropriate attire for the affair.
Do they have those photo booths where you get all of the things up and use the props?
Will they have a photo booth? I'm not sure if they will have one.
I would say that they will probably.
But they will take photos.
Fantastic. I did, I did have one actual question though. Could you clarify the cost on that because your cost did not match our cost? I'm sure the DoubleTree is lovely.
I said $61.50.
Our says $33.21.
Let me double check for the right.
Can you just get that cleared up before consent at the next meeting?
I think, Dr. Green, as Board Member Keller said, we can just make sure that when that comes back for any board action, that we make sure we have that.
We would love to wish you the best of luck. Jackson is lucky to have you and we are very sad to see you.
Thank you so much.
Agreed.
Thank you again, Dr. Green, and thank you, Board Member Keller and Board President Schreiber for those very important inquiries. Item G6 is an item that recommends some position creations and position deletions and our Chief Talent and Learning Officer, Devin Fletcher, is available to answer any questions that board members might have about those tonight.
And item G7 will be presented by our Chief Information Analytics Officer, Stephen Fedor. Mr. Fedor.
Thank you, Dr. Gist, President Schreiber, members of the board. Item G7 is a renewal of contract with Microsoft Corporation out of Redmond, Washington. It's for their EES, or Enrollment for Education Solutions, package for a one-year contract beginning in October. EES helps education customers specifically license products in a greater quantity. It is how we package all of our Microsoft products into a single contract. This includes Microsoft Word, Windows, the whole package, so you get there, as well as SQL Server licenses and other items that we use from Microsoft. This is used by students, teachers, staff members across the board. So in addition to those contracts, it allows us to manage all of that centrally, to identify what programs are on our computers. There's a full suite of tools to help you answer the questions that you may have about it.
Any questions regarding that item?
Thank you, Mr. Fedor. And item G8 is the first of several that many of you and the board members will recognize in each year. This is the time of year in which we are doing some technical work to help to stand up and have the sanctioning of our booster clubs, which are very important to our district and support work happening in our schools and sports and extracurriculars. And there are guidelines established in Board Policy 5707 and this, these come sort of as they're able to pull their information together. But we have our Chief Financial Officer, Alberto Delvedio, who's here to answer any questions board members might have about this item. And items G9 through G11 will be presented by our Executive Director of Bond Projects, Mr. Chris Hutchins. Mr. Hutchins.
Thank you, Dr. Gist, Board President Schreiber, and board members. Items G9 is to approve the change order, number one, for Cherokee Pride Construction. This is to expand the parking lot at McLean and this was due to the city requirement wanting additional parking. And the total increase is $62,500. And this is all relates to the new fieldhouse at McLean. Item G10 is to approve supplement number two with Sparks Reed Architects for the design of the new fieldhouse at East Central High School and the stadium at Rogers College High. These projects are both part of the 2015 bond and we're looking at getting construction starting sometime in the next 12 months on both of those. Item G11 is to approve Amendment 9B with Crossland Construction for the interior renovations at McKinley Elementary. Total increase to the project is $147,000. And the additional work was required due to the roof on the kitchen was required to be replaced and we had to put a brand-new deck and re-roof it during the summer months. And the interior renovation of McKinley is all part of the 2015 bond issue. And there's a ribbon cutting tomorrow at 4:00. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Hutchins. And Madam President, that concludes our presentation of information items tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. From there, we'll move to staff reports and I do know that you have one staff report this evening.
We do have a staff report and we are so excited to present to you an overview of our start of school. We have now had about a week and a half, so last week was our first full week of school. But I was talking to a group of students right before school started and I just randomly said to them in my enthusiasm, I said we were going to have a particularly spectacular school year. Because they were kids and I was an elementary school teacher, we had a lot of fun with that tongue twister, the particularly spectacular school year. But it actually, we had a great start to our year and we have Jorge Robles, who's our Chief Operations Officer here, to walk you through some of what we have to share about the start of schools for the 2018-2019 school year. Mr. Robles.
Thank you, Dr. Gist, President Schreiber, members of the board. Yeah, this is exciting to talk about what is a very large effort that occurs in the summer, one that requires a large number of people to coordinate it. In fact, this year we counted about 52 staff members and across 22 departments to actually get the work coordinated to ensure that our schools not only have a successful start of schools, but we also do it in a way that really delivers it with great customer service. So we're really looking for that wow experience on our schools as we get them ready. And it's really the product of a large number of what are called silent warriors that are working hard over the summer to make this happen. And this effort of coordinated was led by our project manager, Michael Wong, who I'm going to introduce and let him speak to actually what happened throughout the year. So he was our orchestra director over the summer to coordinate this effort. So, Michael?
I'm going to just interrupt for a second and just make sure that everyone knows that Michael Wong's parents are here. And I thanked them before, I thanked them a minute ago for raising such an awesome man who has such a great contribution to our district, so hello.
Thank you, Michael, for your leadership.
Thank you, Dr. Gist, President Schreiber, school board members, the folks who have stayed around to the end, I thank you as well. As Jorge mentioned, start of schools is a tremendous effort. So at the end of every school year, the beginning of spring, we have to pivot from closing out one school year to starting a new one. And it is an effort that involves the whole district. And it's, this year it was 52 staff members across 22 departments. Beyond project coordination though, the whole idea is to really deliver a customer service experience that leaves them saying wow. All right, that's one of the things that we build into service culture, something I'll talk about later. But in terms of the wow factor, here's what we accomplished as a team, and this again is a team effort, I'll be calling that out. So our facilitators, facilities renovated 512,000 square feet of classrooms, hallways, kitchens. With all the rain that we've had and the heat and sun, our groundskeepers mowed 150 acres daily and continue to do so. They laid 22,000 square feet of flooring, applied over 2,000 gallons of paint, and they cleaned 8.3 million square feet. So that's 2,500 classrooms and if you think about scale, that's about 80 football fields. Our talent management recruited five principals, 21 assistants, 46 support staff, and hired 519 teachers, which includes 77 members of the Tulsa Teacher Corps. Our transportation map, 4,400 bus stops, over 149 routes. I did imagine that's about 14,000 miles each day-to-day that they cover and that's half the distance around the world every day. It's pretty impressive. Last but not least, our child nutrition plan and prepared to serve 25,000 lunches and 17,000 breakfasts. Something that's really important to call out, we did all of this and we had two last weeks this summer. So I'm going to, I'm going to be thanking everyone all night because this has been a tremendous effort and everyone really leaned in. So this is actually the fourth, hold on a second, let me back up a little bit. So I wanted to especially call out our custodial teams. With all the construction and renovation that we've done across the district, our custodial teams have been instrumental in making sure that the work has been done and that we had an excellent start of school. So again, thank you for our custodial teams. This is actually the fourth year that we've done this, and coordinated district start of school as a coordinated effort. And every year we try to learn from our lessons from the past as well as implement some of the feedback that we received from our school leaders and our teachers. So this year we identified opportunities to leverage additional support across our teams and we implemented new tools and processes to facilitate collaboration. Ultimately, we were able to have greater collaboration across the district office, but also between the district office and our school sites, which is one of the things that we've been trying to, the relationships that we've been trying to build.
Michael Wong, I interrupt again, could you give an example of the new tools that we use for collaboration, just one, because I think there's some really great ones. I want to make sure people have sort of a visual of that. Are you going to do that?
Absolutely. I'm glad you asked me because that's actually, actually one of the things that we've really been working on and developing and implementing, there is a tracker. So this is an opportunity for us to gather all the major milestones across every individual department, say, hey, these are the major things that we're working on and being able to capture those in one document so we can see and understand, this is my part, this is your part, this is how our parts are interdependent and moving the work forward. So we had an excellent start of school. Thank you for calling that out, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're still learning. So this tracker that we use, this is our first year using it, next year it's going to be better. We have learned, for next year we need continuously planning. There are always unexpected things that they come up. For instance, this year we had a number of never challenges, so we'll be having greater continuously planning for that as well as improved communication channels with our school leaders and our teachers. Shifting gears a little bit, the strategic, the district strategic plan, Destination Excellence, states that we are contributors. The district office fosters a culture that serves our partners, serves the partners with schools, students, and families. The district has continued to include service culture as a priority focus this year and days of service is just one, just one way that we put that movement to action. So over the course of the end of last school year and the beginning of this school year, we served 13, we provided 13 days of service, served 17 schools, and that involved coordinating 40 people, that include district office staff, some of you are still here tonight, I appreciate you, thank you, that involved the Tulsa Fire Department, firefighters and cadets, they were a huge, a huge help and much, much appreciated, as well as the Tulsa Area United Way. Our district is truly all in and again, I want to thank all of the project team members as well as the individual contributors for this project. We couldn't have done it without you.
And board members as well who participated.
And of course, board members, Dr. Gist herself also assisted, so it was really a team effort. We really were all in and I thank everyone, I really do. So just a few pictures, there were quite a few, but I wanted to just point out a few. So here we have, this is McKinley, they are moving curriculum into classrooms, a lot of heavy lifting. All right. And here they posed up for pictures, but this is also really important because the idea is that we want to leave them with a memento of appreciation from us to them as well as to help foster the relationships between district office and our school sites. So something, leave something for them to remember as well. And of course, I mentioned the Tulsa Fire Cadets and offices, this is them posing up out of their buses, they have arrived at Disney, and this is them, you can sort of see a little bit that they're actually wearing Mickey Mouse earrings that were, that were provided to them. But they were really essential, there was a lot of heavy lifting and they were able to assist us with that. So again, thank you to the Tulsa Fire Department. And also thank you to the Tulsa Area United Way who provided volunteers for us as well. So every year there is the regular work that we have to do to prepare for the new school year, but this year we also invested in some key priorities. So improved access to quality learning experiences, we provided 28, we added 28 new classrooms throughout the district, we installed... We installed 14 playgrounds in 12 schools and we installed 257 interactive display boards. That was quite a, quite a bit of work for the IT team. We invested in the safety of our schools. We built five safe rooms. Five safe rooms, we installed 14 enhanced security entries at, at our schools as well. So these are our important investments in the safety of our schools. Also, we invested in the quality of services and facilities for our students. Built six walk-in freezer coolers. This is to provide, provide meals for our schools throughout the year, but also to support other initiatives that happen over the summer. And we implemented new LED lighting and automated energy management in six schools. And this actually saves the district about $95,000 a year. As we come to the close, I want to thank, thank everyone, thank Tulsa's for continuing to support Tulsa Public Schools through the bond. I appreciate it, we appreciate it, the students appreciate it, this is, this is for them. And I made a short video. Bit of the result of the work. So here we see renovation at Disney and Anderson, there's quite a bit of work. Days of service, here we have staff assisting, helping the teachers prepare their classes for the first day of school. The new ageer back at Owen, the enhanced security bell, which is providing security for our students there, new classroom bell, early childhood, childhood classroom in McKinley. Renovations at Disney as well. Beautiful bathrooms in, in McKinley. And a very beautiful senior cafe in McLean. So that is actually the end. In closing, I want to, to thank everyone again for their, for their work as a project team, but also the individual contributors. I want to thank Charlotte and Jorge from trusting me with this project and thank you everyone. Appreciate it.
We'll move to board member reports and concerns. Are there any board member reports or concerns? Mr. Percival?
Just really quickly, I wanted to clarify that I misspoke earlier, that I did, I was present at the August 20th meeting, that I was absent at the July 16th meeting. I got on time and I mentioned an extension, so my bad, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Fait?
I thought it was funny that, what I knew. Two weeks ago, I announced that we were getting ready to have a all-state school board conference in Oklahoma City and one of our board members perhaps was going to be receiving an award and tried to get people to guess who it was. Well, it ended up being Mr. Gary Percival. And I, I have, for those of you on the board who want to look at, uh, what, all the information in the little brochure that we were given, but just read a couple of sentences. What he received was the all-state school board and Buddy Spencer Leadership Award, which is unusual to receive two different awards. But it says, "Since 2003, Gary Percival has consistently served as a force for positive change at Tulsa Public Schools. He keeps an unwavering focus on ensuring that all students have hot access to high-quality public education. Percival is a tireless advocate for not only his constituents in District One, but also for all public education stakeholders in Tulsa." And he received two lovely awards, plaques and money, which was given. Gary, how much was that? So he was, each year they only choose five school board members from across the whole state to be part of the, uh, state school board. So we're very, very proud to have Gary representing us. The other brief announcements for the school board members and just to remind you that you all aren't part of the Oklahoma State School Board Association, we are having a regional meeting here on, uh, October 9th in Tulsa, so you need to RSVP to send it and get that on your calendar. And if you come early for the dinner, you will receive, uh, three different credits. Yeah, one for ethics, one for new laws and one legal if you attend the pre-regional meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Fait. And we should also mention that Ms. Fait is a member of the State School Board Association Board and has served on that for us for a very long time and we're very grateful for that too and very proud of Mr. Percival and both of his awards. Any other board member reports or concerns? Dr. Gist, you have a report this evening. I do. Oh, sorry. It's out of order. Just trying to skip down, excuse me. We don't have any citizen's comments this evening, so, well, we skipped over that and now we'll have Dr. Gist's report. Thank you. Madam President, members of the board and, and Tulsa's, I'm, I have a, a report tonight and I'm going to go ahead and dive into that report as soon as this moves along. So, um, this is very exciting news we have here. We've, uh, learned that our very own principal, um, Dr. Melissa Woolridge at Burtley, Washington, is the Tulsa Educator of the Year for the Women of Color Expo and, um, Dr. Woolridge was actually here earlier. Very exciting, she was, she was with us tonight and, um, she shared with me that that, that event is September 10th, so we'll make sure that we have some more information and perhaps see then some photos to be able to share with you after that, but congratulations there And then I also wanted to echo the, um, the remarks that, that, um, that Board Member Fait gave and wanted to share just some, a photo from, from that event in Oklahoma City in which, uh, Mr. Percival, you can see the photo on the right, are the, are the people who were on the all-state school board, um, award for, for the state. And then as Ms. Fait indicated, Mr. Percival was also the Bobby Spencer Award winner, of which there was only one, so there were two awards given that night and he received both of those awards. That was very exciting, so I wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Percival. And then just again to thank our team for just an awesome start of school. We're going to have a wonderful school year. We have a, a great amount of work ahead of us to continue to improve, to serve our students, but we're, we're off to a great start. So thanks again to Michael Vaughn, to Charlotte Manning, Jorge Robles, everyone who led the, the planning team that you heard about, but obviously it, it takes a whole city and a whole district to, to get that off the ground and all the teachers who worked so hard to get everything prepared for the start of school and now we're in it, we're in our, in our third week, our second full week and, uh, we'll keep plugging along and, and keep you updated about progress for our year. And I believe that concludes my remarks. Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. We have any, now between items this evening, Mr. White? Any new business? So we will, um, from there, do the announcements. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, September 17th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Sherrill Summit Room at the Education Service Center, 3027 South New Haven Avenue, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Is there a motion to adjourn? So we, is there a second?
Sir?
Is there any discussion? So long as it's ever taken for a second. I'll call for the vote. Ms. Fait?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.